Yeah. Scott, you ready? Start the city council meeting for May the ninth, twenty twenty-three. We will start by doing the pledge of allegiance. Stand if you can. Move your head here.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,
and we'll go with call to order. Councilman Mary Bailey.
Here, here.
Lisa Lander, here. Kim Helgason.
Here.
Molly Ryan.
Here.
Mayor Henke is here. All of them are present. City Administrator Mark Paulson.
Here.
City Attorney Scott Riggs.
Here.
City Engineer Derek.
Are we?
Holinger.
Here.
Okay, we also have President.
I'm muted.
Police Chief. Jeff Shaw. Public Works Wayne Eric. And various citizens. We'll start with citizens' comments. Are there any ones? If you will state your name and speak good and loud, certainly appreciate that.
I can speak loud.
Thank you.
My name is Seth Doyle. I'm a mentor of part of the property at One Lancre. And our attorney sent us an email saying that we were in a debate and where it was going to be a topic today at the city council meetings that is here for a few thoughts. Scott Vaughn is the owner of the property. Unfortunately, he can't be here because he is the company he works for. They install and service huge HP printers and liaises and the liaison that that his company would target as they're putting in one of these multimillion dollar ones and he's got twelve and fourteen hour days per month. So I said I would come and try and speak briefly. So we were notified that there was a threat about an invasion order. And so at that point, we hired an attorney and we followed his advice to avoid any additional issue. And we think we've done a pretty good job of that. We certainly have tried. And so I just wanted to say that every vehicle on the property is operable and registered. And that's think what we needed to accomplish. I have noticed that there's a lot of inoperative, what appeared to be inoperable or unregistered vehicles around the town, so we're trying to do our part to get it done. So that's basically all I have to say. Does anyone have a question? Excellent. I'm glad.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that has any citizens' comments to bring forth? Ask one more time. Any citizens' comments? Not, we will move on to adopt the agenda. Mark, is there?
I don't have any additions.
Is this gonna continue there with the meeting? That'll be at the end, so, okay. Okay, as is, then we do need.
I'll make motion to adopt the agenda. I'll second.
Okay, motion. Any other questions on it? If not, motion has been made. And second to adopt the agenda as is, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes pass. Okay, we can go on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes and appointments and financial, we can do all three of those at one time. We do need a motion on that.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, any questions on it? If not, we will continue on. Motion has been made, second to approve the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes and appointments and financial all at one time. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes pass. Presentations, public hearings, recognitions, proclamations, are there any that I am aware of? That I am, okay. Well, we'll move right along then. We'll go into engineering. And city engineers, Derek, you wish to present?
Thank you, Mayor. First thing on the agenda, the twenty twenty-three street improvements project. So plans for this project are now done. The scope of the work is exactly what we've been talking about for months now. There haven't been any significant changes, you know, now versus versus those previous conversations. What we have in the contract is that this project would be done by mid-October of this year. And there's also one more requirement in there that once they start the work, they need to finish up with their paving within thirty days, so we don't end up with the street that's torn up for extended periods of time. So action that we're looking for here tonight is approval of a resolution approving those plans and specifications in order ordering the advertisement for bids. If that is approved, the project will be posted and we would have bids for you at the next meeting.
Okay, so we need to make a motion on resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh nine. Just so you can get the bids.
Yep.
We can move forward. Okay, I will make the motion to move forward with resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero nine.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any more questions on it? If not, there's been a motion made, second for resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh nine. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, opposed, ayes pass.
Thank you. So next on the list, similar action but for the Pearl Creek Sanitary Sewer Project, we're also done with those plans. Scope of the project, just like the street project, very similar to what we talked about in the years in months past. One, a couple of things I will point out, we've had some staff level discussions over this last month. Two scope changes. Previously, the gravel driveway and pad for the lift station, it was all going to be gravel surfacing. After some discussions, in particular relating to one of the easements that we need, we've added into the scope of work some concrete pavement down at the bottom of the pad where all the lift station equipment is to tidy things up, make it look nicer and also more usable for public works. The second thing that we've added is a bid alternate for paving of the entire driveway. So the way that a bid alternate works is we have our base bid, which includes all the work that we've talked about previously, you know, the pipe and lift station and and all of that. That's as part of the base bid with an alternate, in this case, an add alternate bid. The contractor can give us a price for some additional work. And at the time that we get the bids, when I take this to you next time, the council will have the choice whether or not to approve that portion, just that portion of the work. So there's a, there's an alternate that's been added in for paving of the rest of the driveway with between us or asphalt. We're still working on acquiring those easements, but we're making progress on that. As far as tonight, just like the street project, we're just looking for a resolution to again, approve the plans and specifications and order the advertisement for bids.
I'll make a motion then to approve the resolution twenty-three, twenty twenty-three dash ten to get the bids for the project.
Okay, that I'll second. So a motion been made, has been second for resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed?
What was that?
Doug did.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion passes.
That's all I had for you. Thank you.
Well, thank you. That was quick. Appreciate it. Okay.
Come on. What was that?
That's a rarity.
Well, now we're here from legal. Are you ready to go, Scott?
I am. Yeah, your first item there is back on the Traxler request that Mark's giving you a memo there, or Holly did, one of the two. Still have a survey being completed, so we'll have to still process that when that comes in. We'll follow the process, bring the materials back to you, so there's no action for council tonight. We're here to answer questions if you have any. If not, we'll keep moving forward with it unless you've got something else to add, Mark.
No, the other thing is we're, we're gonna schedule a planning commission meeting either the thirtieth, probably or the thirty-first, I think it might be the thirtieth to kind of get the variance thing going. And hopefully by that time, Rappel have a idea of the location and the setback that Jeff's gonna offer that building. So we've kind of started that going now, even though I don't have everything yet, but so. Now, once that's done, it'll come back to the council to, I guess, approve. It's basically like a land swap. So that that alley will actually be where it, where it is right now. Because right now, it's actually more to the north on Traxler's property. So this will kind of straighten that out, so it's actually a good thing. You know.
That's it on that one, unless you have any questions. Okay. I will jump to the next item. This is on the, in your packet, you have a significant number of materials on a reasonable accommodation request. We don't have a process that we've adopted in place, which is consistent with over eight hundred of the cities in this state right now. This is something that cities have been moving towards in the last few years. What we've received is a request to make an accommodation to one of our regulations in our city code. Under the, under the Federal Fair Housing Act, we have to process it as a reasonable accommodation. That's what the materials say. And there's a lot of stuff there and I'm not asking you to read it, but the reality is it talks about all the legalese and the rationale for why that it is done that way. What Mark and I have put together and have in the packet for you is the adoption of an ordinance, but also an application and a process that you would utilize to do this. Even if you don't approve it, we're required by federal law to use this process. So it's the same thing I've used in a couple of other communities. Not reinventing the wheel. It's very straightforward. It looks like it's a lot more information, but what will happen is once if you go forward and adopt the ordinance, and there was a draft of it in there, in the materials, excuse me, it will make staff's life so much easier and allow this to be processed very quickly, rather than trying to create a process on apply. And that's why we want to have something that's objectively can be utilized, pointed to, and used for analyzing whether or not to grant this. You know, I can't speak to the application yet because that hasn't been processed, but if you put in place this process and we use those application form staff will be able to handle that, review it, and make a determination of whether it should be issued or not. And in most cases, they are issued, in all honesty. That's, that's the reality. There are some that are not because of certain overriding non-compliance reasons, but most straightforward applications are processed this way and are granted.
And that's just for, I'm sorry, is that just for this one thing, this one?
This, no, once you create this process, then we have it in place. If somebody else makes a simple request or another request for an accommodation, staff is all ready to just deal with it, you may never even see it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Just to adopt the ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not okay. Ordinance, because then everything else will flow that you have in there, that application, everything else that follows out of this ordinance that I'm asking you to adopt. And I don't think in the original packet materials, it had the ordinance language there, but I've actually put it into our standard form, so we have it, so it's ready to do. So unless Mark has any further comments, my request is that you adopt this ordinance at this point in time. All this will become effective, and then Mark can go through and process the application that's before us.
So if somebody has a reasonable accommodation and they have a disability for whatever reason, then we wouldn't vote on that in the future.
It would just kind of be like. Would not have to.
They'll kind of, you guys will just kind of make the decision like, yeah, that sounds pretty good, or, and if it seems like way out there, then maybe we would discuss it or something.
It only comes to you if there's something significantly different or requiring a you know, what may be deemed not a reasonable accommodation.
Sure.
And so, no, this gives staff the process to do most of these, and I'll say in the upper ninety percent.
Okay.
So. Haven't had that many, oh, sorry.
No, I'm sorry. So this is a HIPAA guided process. That's the first thing you have to, you know, realize. So it has to be confidential.
Yeah.
Because it's a medical condition. And so what would happen if I get one that fits the criteria, then they fill out the application and it's approved. It only runs with that owner, that disability. So if they go away, they sell the house or property, then it can be, you know, it has to be taken down or depending on what it is.
Okay. So you don't get Joe Schmo coming in saying, well, they got the six.
Exactly.
This and that, and it's like, wow, that, okay.
Yeah.
Right. With this application, do they have to submit something like doctor's orders and sensors?
Okay. Okay.
And all that stuff shouldn't come to you, and that's why we're saying the process is to stay with staff, so it doesn't.
Because of HIPAA. Okay.
Yeah, it comes to us and we have a, we have a question. We'll, we'll talk to Scott.
Okay.
With it, because it's a legal thing, but it won't come in front of the council. And it will just run with the owner of the property and actually if their kids are gonna move out, you know, in this case, you could say, well, fantastic, go back to the three, three and a half feet again.
Okay. Whose expense will that be?
There's. Yes.
Is there something? I was reading through it. Is there a timeframe, let's say, from the time that the property is sold, we'll use that, that there's a certain amount of time that it has to be cleaned up, you would say, or removed? And is there, is there, is there a renewal date? Do they have to, you know, like buying your license plate, you know, every year? Do you have to have?
There is a process that we can utilize to determine if the accommodation is still necessary. So yes, that is
Okay.
part of this process. And while there's not a perfect timeframe, the reality is if the accommodation is no longer necessary, it is supposed to be removed at that time. That's what's supposed to happen.
Within a reasonable time.
Yeah. And so staff's not gonna walk out there and, you know, mark demand that it be removed that day, but the reality is, that's the process.
Okay.
It's not being, and Mark's correct, this, this only runs with whatever accommodation is necessary. It's not like a zoning approval where it runs with the property. It only runs with the person or individuals that need the accommodation. So that's why it does go away once that, that is, is no longer necessary.
I'd like to add, this was an easier process than I need to go through for my house, Marla, so.
This process is easier. To be streamlined, that's what we're trying to do, and I'm saying, I, I, I hope you I've answered the questions, Mark's answered the questions, because I hope you adopt it, because it makes Mark's life a lot easier, and frankly, the councils.
Okay.
We need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion then has been made. And second to adopt a reasonable accommodation ordinance.
Yeah.
Those in favor of?
Was it? Do we need a number?
It's, I don't even know if we've done one.
There isn't any on here.
No, I, we don't have a number. We just got got a
Well, there is.
Ordinance today, so I will have to.
We'll insert the number, that's. Yeah, that's, it's fine. This, what you have is fine.
Okay.
And you would do a roll call for that on the, on the ordinance. A roll call of you guys voting.
Everyone?
Yes, yes.
Individually, okay.
Yeah.
Well, then we will start out with Molly Ryan.
Yeah. Just a roll call? Yes, I, I.
Hey, don't say.
I, yeah, I.
Well, how about you, Kim?
I.
Okay, Lisa Lander.
I.
And Mary Bailey?
I.
And the mayor Doug said aye too, so it does pass.
So who made the motion second?
Me.
Me.
Seconded it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. That's what we need, and now Mark will be able to process this accordingly and go from there. I have nothing further on this, unless you have any questions.
Okay, so can they, this individual then, they make the application forward and then it goes through from there on, so we probably will not see anymore.
That's correct. Mark will contact them and say, hey, here's the materials and go from there.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, then we can go on to old business. First item on there is requests for chickens within the city limits. Who wishes to start off with that?
Well, so basically the next what you have to decide tonight is if it's something you're interested in, as far as an ordinance process, et cetera, then you would instruct staff to come up with an ordinance. We put some ordinances in your packet. I don't always do that. Or maybe I'll put in one that I like, but we put a bunch, you know, we put several in there so you get some ideas, because there's some different ways that cities, you know, regulate these chicken, regulate chickens, so. Yeah, but that's really the bottom line now is, if you want to move ahead with it, then we need to adopt an ordinance. And then bring the ordinance back probably June, and that's kind of when you would make the final decision, you know, on chickens.
So if we moved ahead to date to put together an ordinance, that's not moving ahead a hundred percent of people that were.
You don't have to adopt the ordinance.
Okay.
I mean, it's just saying, okay, we're gonna put an ordinance together, a draft ordinance. But then the council would review that at a, probably the June meeting, and then that's when you make a decision on whether you're gonna allow them or not. So nothing would be decided tonight. And it would just be a draft ordinance, obviously, until it's adopted, so.
Well, I like, I think chickens are a good thing, and the reason I think that is because all the towns around us have them. Because we are like already a farming community, okay, and like self-sufficient. I know that there's concerns and I get that. But there's, you know, I just think the more that people can be self-sufficient and the more freedom you give people to do things like that, I think it's good. You know, like the more freedom, the better, right? That's, that's what I think. And then, you know, I was thinking about this the other day and like, you know, because I know some people, you know, think this is okay, and some people are like, no, that's not good, and so I guess, and you know, we were talking about this in the EDA the other day too, about like our town and, and this is kind of broad. But, and I'm like, my thinking is like, not like everybody else's, I don't think in, you know, straight lines, so. But my thought is like, so the other day, for instance, okay? And I think this would help with things like this. This is why I'm just bringing this up. This would just help with coming up with if, like, something like this is okay. It's like the other day, we were talking in the EDA and, and Chris was here and she was saying, oh, you know, when I go to this other town, it looks like this, and it's so beautiful and all the houses look this way and, and I thought, and she's like, and I wonder why that is, you know, and I was like, well, they probably have like some sort of you know, box. How to explain that? Like, I'm so visual. Like, they have some sort of box that they say, okay, this is how we want our town to look like. Community standards, for lack of like a better word, I guess. And like, sometimes I feel like in Kenya, we don't have that, like, we have legal things, you know? But not everybody thinks that way, you know, like, I think very abstract, like, okay, what do I, what is the town? What do we want our town to look like? What do we want it to be? Do you know what I mean? Like, we were talking about how Main Street, like, we just let people rent by buildings and throw junk in them, and well, that's not what anybody wants their town to look like. Okay, some people, but not me. And then, like, we have a really good bunch of people on our committee that are very different, right? So like, if I had my own town, I mean, I can tell you what I want to look like. I might have chickens and clover lawns and, you know, it'd be neat and clean, but it'd be, you know, way different. And then maybe if Molly made a town, it would be very different. It'd probably be more you know, I don't know, but but I guess, yeah, no, but what I'm saying is, you know, like, that's okay, you know, but that's why we're like, I just feel like there's not really like a community standard. Everything's just kind of like, you know, and I'm the most free person in the world. I don't think anybody should be boxed in, and I'm not saying like, you can't go outside that box within reason, but you kind of have to have like a standard to begin with. Does that make sense? Just like in any community, and sometimes I feel like we don't have it, like, everything's kind of willy-nilly and and as much as I'm kind of a thinker like that, well, that's doesn't, that's not good for a community. You have to have some sort of structure to say, well, you can't buy a building and then throw crap in it, and you can't just, I mean, like, I want chickens, and of course, we'd have the, you know, make it so people are clean and they aren't pigs about it, and I think it's important to have chickens. I think it's good for our community, but at the same time, it's like, it's hard, I think, maybe for people to vote on this without, because it's kind of out there, you know what I mean? And we don't have like a structure. Does that, is this making sense? It makes sense in my brain, but I just don't think we have a vision of what our town looks like. I don't think we've ever had that, or maybe we haven't had that in a long time. There's no vision of when I go down Main Street, I want it to look, you know, it can be kind of different, but I don't know, and I might, like I said, my thought might be different than Molly, you know, or your guys' obviously, because we're all a little different, but that's what makes our council kind of good, is we're all sort of different, but we want the same thing. Is this, I mean, I don't know if we have a special meeting about that, or, or maybe it doesn't matter to anybody else, but I just get annoyed with that sometimes, like, well, what is that? What is the visual of our town or the standard? I guess, sometimes I just feel like it's manifested itself however it wants, because we don't like have that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, broadly speaking, it makes sense. It's, you know, usually starts with downtown areas of towns.
Yeah.
But so much of, unfortunately, the properties, you know, that you see toys out or you see piles of dirt, a lot of that stuff is very difficult to regulate for a city to say, you've got to clean that up.
Right.
When you have a junk car, that's another thing, or you have piles of junk, stuff like that, but, you know, we've talked about this numerous times about especially the older part of town, that there isn't a pride in people's, some people's ownership.
Well, yeah.
And it's not as big of a thing, but it's a newer area, but in the older part of town, it is. It's, it's just difficult to regulate that, you know, to say, okay, if you don't do it this way, the way we want our vision.
Yeah.
We're gonna go to court and make you change it.
Right, but then, but then maybe.
Trying to get people to voluntarily do it.
Right, and that's, and maybe that's, maybe that's what my problem is, is like, you know, I don't really like a lot of laws and rules myself, but maybe that's the problem is, there is, like, I don't feel like anybody knows what the set vision is, so they can do whatever they want. Do you know what I mean? Like, maybe give them a reason, I feel like, hey, this is kind of what we want our town to be like, and, well, I don't know what that is. I mean, and I'm on the city council, I have no idea with I mean, I know what I want, but.
With the downtown.
Yes.
And work it way out, and I'm not sure how.
Don't know how to implement that or.
Do that. I can check with Cora. There used to be like the Minnesota Design Team, Governor's Design Team.
Yeah.
In the eighties and nineties, and they used to come into cities and they would do these weekend visits and they would try to get people involved and they would try to brainstorm, what do you want our downtown to look like? What do you want our downtown to look like, and they would do sketches and stuff like that.
Yes, some.
I don't know if that's even around.
I mean, I don't, I don't think it needs to be so like set in stone, but.
No.
Does it, is this making sense, or does this?
But.
This the other day, you know?
Like, that's not true, and you are, but, but, I'm saying, it's the same thing, they were both on.
Yeah, but that's good, because what I'm saying is, as much as I don't like structure. That much, you have to have something, I mean, you have to have a baseline to go off of, I mean. Even I have to have that, or I would be out in outer space, you know, so it's like, well, you have to have something, and I just feel like we have nothing.
Like the exterior.
You know?
You start, like, in the downtown, and you say you want the buildings to look a certain way.
Yeah.
Try to do it as a guideline.
As a guideline, yeah, and like.
That's what you can sort of control, but the inside is what's harder.
Yeah.
And if you have a direct violation, like. One property, which I'm not gonna. Say that might have a person staying there.
Right.
Okay, that's not legal.
Right.
But if a guy's got a, a person's got a building.
Yeah.
And they've moved, they have stuff stored in there, it's more difficult to enforce, because we look at building code. And condition and structure, we look at. The end use all the time, I mean, when I say end use, I mean. Uh, you know, subjectively, like, there's stuff stored in there, but it's vacant.
Okay.
You know, you shake off it and want to fill a building.
Kind of talking about that the other day, like, maybe you put something in the window or something, or cover it up, or.
Yeah. But it's.
Yeah. And if you want to do that, that's fine, and I'm not saying, well, I don't want the Stepford Wives, you know, I don't want that.
No.
Either, I mean, that's really obnoxious, and I wouldn't want to have that in town, but it's like, well, we're all here, I mean, I just kind of feel like. You know, we'll, all this stuff comes in and we vote on it, and it's like, well. Okay, fine, but. I mean, I mean, I just don't, I mean, and maybe I'm missing it, maybe we have it somewhere, and I just don't know what it is, and I, and I can't see it, and. I don't know, but I just.
I've never seen one for us, I've seen design standards that. Previous administrators brought from other cities.
Yeah.
And ones that I had when I came here from other cities.
Yeah.
I've never seen one.
Want to pick on people, you know, I don't want to like get up in everybody's business out in the deal, but it's like, well, and maybe if you lay it out to somebody like that, like, if you start, you know, if you go and tell somebody. Well, you can't do this, and you better do this, or I'm gonna ticket you, well.
That's what we said.
Yeah, then they're just gonna be like, whatever, but.
But it's.
But I'll say that that's my, I'll be honest, that's my concern of chickens. And I'm not saying I'm against them.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that I'm necessarily for them.
Sure.
But if we put together an ordinance. Then we need to stick to that ordinance.
Then, yeah, I agree.
And if, and that's, and I can, I get concerned with Wayne having to deal with it, I get concerned with Jeff having to deal with it. Because, you know, Wayne and I have talked, probably ninety percent of people that have the chickens are gonna be perfectly fine.
Right.
But the ten percent that aren't are probably gonna be. Issues.
They're just gonna scab it together with whatever.
And I've, there are times that I feel that we. As a city, I don't even know who it is, but. We don't stick to our ordinances. And if we're gonna take this time and put together an ordinance, by golly, if someone.
Yeah.
Does again. You're done, like, no.
And maybe there's multiple chances, no, no, like, one time, and you're done. And maybe that's what I'm trying to say, say, maybe that's what my problem is, or, or something like, maybe that's what it is, it's like, well, maybe we're not sticking with our ordinances, and. That's what I'm irritated with, I just feel like there's no baseline, you know, like, we're just, everything's willy-nilly, so, maybe. So. Well, we just sat here today, but, but I mean, maybe you're, you're right, like, maybe that's why I'm frustrated, because I feel like. I mean, I'm frustrated with that, like, I was just thinking about this the other day, I'm like, well. I don't, I've never, like, I'm on city council, I don't know. What it, I don't even know what it is that we want our town to be like. Do you know what I mean? I have no, I, I don't have an idea, I know what I want my house to be like, but.
I just think, I, and there's, there's, there are good things with that, and there are good things and bad things with, with all of our ordinances.
Right.
But a- as we're putting this one together, and I looked through some of those, and, I mean, they're really good, some cities have done a very nice job of putting together specific ordinances. And I've known some of those cities, and they, they stick to those ordinances.
Yeah.
And you have one shot, and if you.
Then your chickens are gone.
Done, but we need to stand behind that.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, people are gonna start, and it's, again, it's gonna be the ten percent, but the ten percent could be the, the biggest issue.
Well, it's always the, only the few that are the issue anyway, yes, yeah.
The thing that we've had come up. Numerous times, like you say. Enforce the ordinances that we have now. In the years that I've been on the council, we've had this come up twice. And it was turned down chickens, or turned down, flat turned down. You know, a regular chicken, this is coming from a pretty reliable source. Lays about a hundred and eighty eggs a year. So how many chickens are we gonna have? You know, allowed in, not only that. But, um, you can buy them now for three dollars a dozen, you know, I mean. They're in various places, they're all. Uh, range free, or whatever you wish to call them, you know, on that particular part of it, uh, from there. I'm just saying this here, and like you say, enforcing the order, who's gonna do it, are we gonna have the police out doing chicken patrol? Are we gonna have, uh, Wayne come out and tape measure to make sure that this is right? Do we, I mean, I can go on and on and on and look at it, who's gonna pay for all this?
Yeah, but I mean, on the, on the other hand, I don't think like. Everybody in town's gonna have chickens, I mean, I think you're probably gonna have like five families that have chickens.
How many dogs run around, don't everybody doesn't have a dog?
Well, I know, that's what I think too, dogs run around, and they're in fights.
How many times have you made?
Right.
Chasing dogs? And I've got two dogs. How many miles you chasing, in years' time, chasing dogs, you know, and hurrying them around, and doing all these things, what if the chickens get out?
Well, that's, I think, if the chickens.
Get the chicken out, who's responsible?
Well, you're gonna bring coyotes into town to get the chickens, I mean, they're gonna be in the, the cages, so that's another concern.
Well, I mean, I don't know, do you want to call another city council, talk to them? Because, I mean, other people are doing it, and they, it's not like a big problem, I mean.
I would say some are and some aren't, you truly look at the communities around us, because I did do some digging.
Yeah.
It's not all the communities around us.
Right, but that's a lot, I mean, I don't know, I, I mean, I'm, I'm chickens, I'm for the chickens, I think people have mean dogs, they get out, I mean. I say, if you can't have chickens, well, then don't have dogs and cats and anything else, you know, dogs are meaner, they bite.
Well.
I mean. You know, I mean, and like, it's good for kids, we have like a, I just feel like we have like this four H community, and, I don't know, I mean, like, I have rabbits and. For my kids, I just think our community, just a farming community. I think we have to have faith in our residents, and I don't know, I mean, I guess. I don't know if, if you put fines on people, or if you do whatever, or just be like, you know, whatever, we're killing your chickens, you know? We're taking them, I mean, I don't know. But. I just feel like it's our. I just feel like, in our community, that is so. Orientated towards four H farms, F F A, I just, I, to me, it's a no-brainer, but. I get the, I get the, the, the concerns, I really do. But. I don't know.
Well, I'm gonna jump in here a second. I may be wrong, so straight me out. Um, have you expressed your opinion on it, Chief Lee?
I've been very quiet during this whole time, just taking this all in, but since I was asked, here's my opinion. After being in charge of ordinances for fourteen years, I can tell you that our city, like many other cities, has a right of entitlement. If I come up against somebody and they are high up in the food chain, it's an issue, if they're not high up in the food chain, it's not an issue, and that's why I did things for fourteen years.
What do you mean, food chain?
Like, Mary was high up in the food chain, more important than Kim, for an example. So. If Mary has something, and it's not quite up to par. Well, we'll give Mary kind of a break, but Kim. Is not as high in the food chain. She doesn't get the break.
Well, they, that's not fair, well, you shouldn't do that.
I shouldn't do that. It's called small town politics, it's no different in your line of work, it's the same thing, but. I've listened to this for three times now. I'm not anti-chicken, I'm not. However, I think, just looking, making this ordinance isn't putting it in stone, it doesn't take much to put this together and look at it. So it's gonna get people tongue-blowing, I think.
Yeah, and I, and I should say, I am not against having them put together an ordinance, I just wanted to start the conversation.
I agree.
That if we're gonna take the time to put in the ordinance, we really have to think through what that means.
Yeah.
And we have to follow through with that ordinance.
I agree.
That's something we decide to move forward.
What I'd like to see is, I'd like to see these coops inspected by somebody, I don't care if it's one of us on the council, I don't care. If it's someone from the volunteer chicken community, I don't care, I think the chief has enough on his plate, I know there's enough on his plate. But I think if we're gonna do this, it's right, so then we're all on the same page, because the example I always gave was. Kim built an amazing coop, has it up to snuff. I don't have the resources, my coop is substandard. My chickens get out, her dog eats it, now the chief gets called because now her dog is mean because I ate my chicken, I don't want to have those issues. I don't think every house in town is going to have chickens, I think some people are gonna start it, like they do a garden, this is a lot of work, and they're not gonna want to have it, so. We'll see chicken groups for sale on, in the marketplace or whatever in no time, so. I think it's worth looking into, I think people should get the option to be good adults and good stewards of our animals, and I'm not against it, so. I think I'd like to make the motion that we put the order. Start looking at putting our ordinance in place.
Okay, I was seconded.
From you, I'd like to hear what you have to say.
I'm kind of the same, same idea, as far as I'm not against the chickens, but I'm just concerned, because I, I know there's gonna be. Those that really want them, and they're gonna follow the rules and take care of them the way they should, but it's, like Molly said, that ten percent that. Are gonna ruin it for everybody, because they're gonna just. Oh, my neighbor's got chickens, I think I'm gonna do it, and they're just gonna, they don't have the finances to build a nice coop, so they're gonna go and get some. Hodgepodge thing, and yeah, they're gonna get out, or it's just gonna look.
Well, and maybe part of that ordinance too could be like, okay, listen, if you're gonna get chickens, then you come in here and. Tell us what your coops can be like, and, you know, we want to see.
Build it?
Before you build it, or before you buy it.
That was in.
You put something like that. Yeah, like, we want to see what it is like, and how big it's gonna be, and what are you gonna do with your waste, and this is what you have to do, and. Yeah. Mm-hmm, good.
There's a website that, uh, I belong to, a mayor's for Minnesota, so there's a lot of it that comes in, it happened to be, um, about January. Where there was one mayor that brought in, they were wondering about chickens, you know, within their, uh, so I. And there was quite a few comments made on it, and I will honestly say this here, that there was more. That were in favor of chickens, ordinances and that, that they had made, than what there was against, okay, I gotta put it that way. And even like Edina, first, you know, as a larger town, you know, allows chickens in. Uh, it was varied from three to five, and they had a, a, a fee on there, let's say each chicken costs you thirty bucks a year. For an ordinance, you know, to pay for a lot of these things.
Sorry, I gotta go, yeah.
Very good.
Good discussion.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could add, uh, we, we have the motion that Lee you seconded, or you, you. Or, no, you, you brought it, you seconded it. What, are you looking for a lot of detail, are you looking for extremely simplistic?
I think.
There are a lot of different ways to approach this process.
Well, and I think the other, I think maybe if we look at some of these, and maybe use one as like a guideline.
Yeah.
You know, like a guideline, like, I mean, Northfield's pretty strict about how they have stuff in their town. I mean, maybe we say, okay, it's this strict, you know, I mean. I don't know, but.
Uh, I trust Mr. Volson and the staff's ability to look into this, I also, and this kind of reminds me, when we went back to putting golf carts in town, I was. I was brought up playing my ring as chief, and none of them has golf carts, and we haven't had a bunch of issues with them over the years, and so. We've had some.
It's always like somebody, right?
But it's not out of hand. And I don't think this would be out of hand either, so, I think it's worth looking at.
So has that motion been seconded, is anybody seconding this motion?
I seconded it.
Where are we at?
Second.
Okay, so how are we gonna put this here? To explore the idea.
Oh, okay, so.
Yeah.
You're gonna say move by.
One second, Mark.
Second by Mary.
Mark.
To authorize.
Mr.
Jeff.
Chief wants to make a comment with some.
Just, because I, um, um, council member, Brian brought up like, one and done, and, you know. So my concern is, okay, so. You said off citation, you're out, they should go to court, they're gonna get. Who's gonna go on the, is this gonna be a court order, saying? If not, if you go on a property and move the chickens to the coupon property.
Yeah, and then you gotta catch chickens.
So like, that's, that's only, yeah.
Well, and.
Set a citation and.
It, it'd be, it'd be like any other, Jeff, you're right, I mean, it's, it's a due process issue. Um, you know, you've dealt with it, Lee's dealt with it, you know, for years, you guys have dealt with this. You don't just get to walk on and take these off, I mean, that's the reality, so. No, we have to have a process, I mean, it'd be revoking of a license in this case in some form. Either comply, or they don't comply, then they either deal with the court, we get an order, um, you, you're right, somebody'd have to go out eventually. It's no different than some, some folks that don't comply with removing. You know, whatever the structure may be that they've, they've illegally constructed, it, they're all unique. All unique. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you don't have to go to someone's yard and shoot other chickens.
Or they get out of the coop.
That's right.
Yeah, so it's very similar to when we deal with junk cars.
Yep.
And that's very frustrating.
Yeah.
You know, because. Councilman Lee knows, and. You know, it's Jeff, Chief Jeff knows. Okay, we are on top of these things all the time. Whether we ticket them. Or whether they're, well, towing doesn't happen a lot, because we have to go to court. The courts don't cooperate with us. And the biggest problem with the court system time.
Right.
Flat out, that's it, it's not them saying. We're not gonna grant your request, even though that does happen too much. It's the amount of time it takes from the time that it's. Entered, goes to the prosecuting attorney and goes into the court. Nine months goes by, or the person asks for an, you know, extension. Um, or whatever you call it. A, a year goes by, and people are like yelling at us, or, you know, mad at us because it's not clean, and you try to tell them, they don't care, but that's the reality of it. There, there's nothing we can do about that, and this is probably the same deal, I'm not saying that. To be against it by any means, but that's just the reality of.
Well, okay, so, can I just, okay, and I know this is abstract, and I'm sorry, but. That's what I'm saying about what I was talking about earlier, like. Okay, yes. Even if you have like this vision of what the town is like, and, and then you go. If, I mean, maybe we need to do something else. Like, maybe there's gotta be, there's gotta be, and maybe I need to come up, I don't know, like, there's gotta be something else, because here's the problem. Like, when you say, okay, well, you have these junk cars in your house, it's like crap, and. Okay, fine. And I don't like that either, but sometimes, you know, it's not like. Sometimes people are just poor.
Well, yeah, there's.
Okay, I mean, if, if, or you don't know, but, but on the other, but it's like, even, even some of it doesn't have money, can do something. But. I don't know, maybe there's something else we need to do, like, like a whole different separate thing to build the morale for people to want to do it, do you know what I'm saying? Like.
Yeah, try to incentivize.
Incentivize.
What that is.
They don't either, but.
We had a pot of money, we could maybe help, right, but.
But it's like, and I know for instance, like, you know, there's a neighbor, and I'm not gonna say, but I'm Langford, and I think he's older and has a disability, and I think you guys have like mowed his lawn for him. Okay. Okay, but, you know, because I know there's some people that are in that situation, but I'm just, yeah, maybe, yeah, some sort of, and maybe it's not money, maybe it's something else, maybe it's just the morale or the pride in your home, but I just, I, I just feel like we're missing something, and I guess I don't really know what it is, I don't really know how to explain it, but some makes sense.
Yeah.
Like, there's, like, there's, like, when, like, when, it just like hit me when Chris was saying, he's like, well, I drove through this town, and all these houses look like that, and I'm like, well, I don't know that, I mean, that's two Stepford Wives for me, but there's obviously something they're doing, that this is our town, this is how we want it to be, and the people are, and that's what small communities are all about, they're to have, so we can do however we want, that's the beauty, but I just don't feel like we, we know what that is. I, I don't know what that is.
Smart improvement program, that's an incentive that we've used pretty successfully.
Okay.
Many built, you know, fifteen, maybe, businesses have used it.
Yeah, yeah, Main Street, we have that, right, like, and we have that on our Main Street, and that, and our Main Street's getting better, I mean, I think we've made some progress, right?
That's helped.
So we're doing good, but that's better, but what about, like, the, you know, like, our, like, we're saying our resident, residential areas, you know, maybe that's something.
Yeah, that's a whole bigger.
And of course, I, you know, I, like, Sam came in and did stuff, and roughs the windows and all of that, and.
Yeah, we did have that.
That's good, but, I mean, maybe we don't even need all of that, you know, maybe it's just more like, I don't know, the morale of, of the people, and how do you do that? I don't know. I don't know, but there's gotta be, but it happens, it happens in other communities.
I mean, I think most towns are like, we are not like the wall, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
You know, towns that are rich suburbs maybe look better, because frankly, they have a ton of money.
Well, yeah, and if you go south, if you go south into the south, oh, south, I mean, boy, those towns are rough, and you're like, well, Kenyan, like, is, looks like a star city down here in Arkansas, or something. Like, boy, we're like rich, you know, so I guess it's all relative to where you are, and, I don't know. I just, that was just like floating through my mind the other day, I'm like, why are we having so many different thoughts on this, and it's like, well, maybe because we don't have a standard to begin with, to even put it in the box or outside the box, or to think about it. I was just thinking that, and so it was bothering me a lot, and I don't know, I'll think about it more, so.
Well, there has been a motion made, and it has been seconded.
Okay.
On.
Yeah, so to authorize the city administrator, city attorney to draft chicken ordinance and application.
Okay, we'll do this on a one.
No, you're just gonna, you're just directing us to put it together, you're not adopting, it's just a, a regular.
Okay. All of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. But the motion passes. Okay, item B, solid waste hauler agreement. Mark, I know you're up to date.
Okay, so, um, the current agreement, as we talked about, expires at the end of June. Attorney Riggs developed a new three-year agreement with Flum, which you have a copy of, or both the, the marked up that shows changes, and then the clean copy of the ordinance of the agreement. It has the CPI increases that were talked about, on that they had requested. And so, basically, we're just, I guess, recommending adoption of that at this point.
There needs to be a motion made, then.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I hate to see a increase, but that's natural, so I'm gonna say, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the agreement.
I'll second it.
Okay, any questions on it? Motion been made, second on a solid waste hauler agreement. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, ayes pass. Okay. Solid waste cleanup day update. Who wishes to go into that, and?
Um, at the April council meeting, a spring, spring cleanup day was scheduled for Depot Park on Saturday, May twentieth, from nine AM to twelve PM. The event is open to city residents, um, and I put a copy of our little flyer, which we sort of stole from Lake City, but I won't say that too loud, but Holly did a great job with this, and um, Cora got the Lake City one, and this thing drives me crazy here, but anyway, um, it turned out good, so.
Okay.
So anyway, it's just, it's information, but I just wanted to provide an update on that, um, there is, you know, there will be a requirement that residents bring a utility bill or license or whatever for residency. Um, and we have a breakdown, so the flyer that you have in the packet is what we're putting out there on the city website, Facebook page, cable access channel. Um, we put, um, the information in the newsletter, which went out the end of April. Um, so, anyway, that's kind of where that's at, and I think things have fallen into place from us, you know, their stuff, their roll-offs, and trucks lined up, and personnel, and I think we have somebody who's gonna um, take money and check people's residency, so I think we're pretty good, so.
Who's gonna do that?
Um.
From the city?
No, it's the person who.
So we won't have any city personnel involved into it, is that what I gather?
Yeah, basically, because I don't have, I don't wanna pay overtime, I want to.
I'm out of town.
You're out of.
I'm out of town that weekend, so.
Yeah, you said that, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, if anybody's interested in what we've given us, made contact with someone who can, you know, do that, and, you know, I've agreed that we pay them fifteen bucks an hour to stand out there, um, I think it's more than worth it, so.
What time do you want her to be down there?
It'd be eight thirty. And we can talk next week about if there's any logistical questions or anything she has.
Okay.
Um, I'll be here, I'll be in transit in the morning, but we're flying out in the afternoon, so.
Will you have some petty cash or something ahead of time for her in case she needs to make change for these cash?
Yeah, I was thinking of that today, um. Yeah, I'll talk to Holly, and we'll see what we come up with.
Okay. Hopefully, everybody can pay by check, but.
Well, no, some people are gonna pay with cash, and that, that's something I was trying to think of today. Um, bills will be one thing, but if we get again to change, that's gonna get kinda, I don't know, you know.
I would think, yeah, just dollar bills should be good, because it's all solid numbers, so.
Yeah.
Shouldn't have to change.
I've got a, I don't know if we have the cash drawer, I don't know if anybody's got access to anything like that.
She can use mine, I've got.
Okay.
Got one of.
So, if you wanted to drop that off ahead of time, then I think we could just get, um, you know, get some change put in there.
Okay.
Yeah, because the only thing we have is a cash register, which by that time is gonna be done at the pool, the pool's not open, but.
I get like a hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's all you need, it's nothing major, yeah.
You could maybe borrow it from the muni.
Well, we have.
You know, but I was going to the bank, if you don't have to, I mean, just big deal.
Yeah, we have petty cash, so we'll figure it out.
Okay, okay. Okay, is there any more discussion on item C, solid waste cleanup day update? I'm not, okay, sounds like it's all in good hands. We can start then with new business. Approve a Memorial Day parade for May twenty ninth of twenty twenty-three, and that we do have to have a motion on. And I can tell you what, um, what that will be on the parade permit, was basically, it will start at, um, subway, wind up, or I'm Speedway, I'm sorry. And we'll wind up at the cemetery, and I believe in the past, we've just used like half of the street. Is that correct, if I recall right?
Yeah. You just use.
Yeah. So it'd be a short period of time, it's just, uh, traffic control. So. I'm gonna make the motion on that one.
I will second it.
Okay. Prove Memorial Day parade for May twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three, all of those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes. Okay, I'm gonna do it the short way, L M C I T, liability coverage wager, we've gone through that each year. And that, and, um, Mark or, or Scott, whichever one of you two wanna?
Uh, yeah, this is your annual designation, we've always told you, and the city has never, you, you have never, uh, entered into waiving your caps, your immunity cap, so I can explain that in further detail if you need that, but it's recommended you authorize Mark to forward that back to L M C I T, and with the non-waiver box checked.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, very good. Motion been made, second on L M C T I li- liability coverage waiver. Any discussion, all those in favor of the, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes pass. Together, that's it for new business. Other business, we do have a schedule of upcoming meetings, will be K M U meeting, which will be Tuesday, May the sixteenth, four PM. Our next city council meeting will be Tuesday, June the thirteenth, at seven PM. Continue on with council and staff general comments, and, uh, Lee, and we'll start out with you, if you've got anything to say.
Um, I'd like to thank Mr. Eric, and the chief, I know they've been working very hard lately, you know, Mr. Eric had some sort of a mishap down at the wastewater plant that involved a lot of extra time and staff, and he handled it with grace and poise like he always does, so it was nice, so I don't think the staff get the recognition they deserve at times, and I wanna make sure that they get that, so thank you and your coworkers very much.
How about you, Kim?
Um, I just wanted to, um, throw out that the park and rec, we're gonna have our first farmer's market on June first.
Oh, yay.
So, that'll be kicking off first and third Thursdays of the month, June through September.
And I'll be at First Lutheran again.
Lutheran Church, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Holly, how about you? Or I mean, Mary, I'm sorry.
Um, no, I don't think so. How much is it? Can I just ask quick, how much is the table?
We're not charging.
Oh, it's free. Oh, great, okay, good news, because people have asked, so, okay, nope, nothing for me then.
Yeah. Well, I gotta say the same thing for Public Works, Wayne, you've really jumped on getting, uh, potholes repaired already, looks good. And for you, chief, done a marvelous job, I'm proud of you, and your staff that you have, the officers. Sorry to hear about all of the fatalities, killings, and that, that's gone on, we're very fortunate, um, see what's, what's happening, but, uh, I know it's come close to you too, with some of your own colleagues that you worked with before, so. How about you there, attorney?
I have nothing.
Okay, how about you, engineer? Mark?
Um, just a couple of things, I'd like to, um, I guess, early, and before she starts, welcome our new finance director, Ellie Perry, will be starting Monday, the fifteenth, next Monday, and I also wanna really thank Holly, Linda, and Sue Dodge, has been really stepping up and helping out quite a bit too. Um, thank you guys for everything you're doing now, so, in the interim, we appreciate that. So, that's all I have.
Anybody else? Well, we're at the end of it, given that.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, I'll second.
Okay, there's no discussion on that, I don't think, so, motion been made, and second to adjourn the council meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, over at eight o'clock.
Oh. Good. That's nice.
Same style, we have no.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's try that.
Hey, very cool.
I, I, that's what it comes down to.
Big chief, do we have a disabled pool, you know? Yeah, good spot, maybe, if we need to improve.
Given that it's subject. Oh, that's it, I, I, I think we can start, get a number and negotiate and come back.
Okay.